Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'll take attendance, I'm here. Alan is not here. John, how are you? Greg? Michelle? Jim? Stephanie? Lisa? Michael? Julie? Janet? And Peter. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public comment. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, the item on the consent agenda passes. Item number four, the board's chairs report. I just have one, we have, we have a long, well, we have a healthy agenda tonight. So I only have one comment and it has to do with the region in review. Those who may have seen the reimagined region in review, I suggest you take a look at it. I thought it was a really great user experience to be able to see the embedded videos and to scroll through. And I thought from a content standpoint, I was happy to see that there was page after page of things that had to do with the students and the school per se, and a lot less advertising. Maybe the advertising was the same content wise, you know, as a percent, but it seemed like this was more about the students. So I particularly liked it personally. But would strongly suggest if you haven't looked at it, take a look at it. It's, it's what I would certainly consider a really good user experience. So, well done. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to you.
Well, good evening. And I do kudos to Colin for the regional review. I thought it was a, we got wonderful feedback from that. And on the other side, just so everybody knows, we have at this point hit three continents with our viewers. So we are able to track and see how much our tiny little school is moving and just making across the world. So there are a couple of things that I do want to talk about just tonight. We are currently reworking our Power School. We had to put a plan in place. We're gonna talk a little bit about some of our resignations and changes that we've had. So it's forced us to look at the, look at the software program a little bit differently, making certain that we are maximizing all of the data points that are within it. So Teresa DeBrito has been working with Cruck and did an audit on the system. And from that system, we've recognized that there are many missed opportunities that we've had. And so things like looking at our GPAs, looking at elementary report cards, our transcripts, there are ways we can certainly make certain that families are more informed about their students, how they're doing in school, making certain that we're able to pull the reports as we need. Currently, the way that it's listed in the system, they are discrete pieces of data. So they don't always talk to one another in their fields. So luckily Vic has been working diligently, both with the company and with the, our current users to make certain that we are using it properly, to make certain that the special fields are being integrated into our systems so we can start having real time data that is meaningful, which I think all parents are looking to have. Vic has joined Power School user groups. He's scheduled for additional training. So for us, the more that we know how to better maximize, I think we want to be in control of our own data. And I don't know that we always are in that driver's seat. So we're working on that. And we will be having our elementary report cards going through Power School. But we are going to print them off this year. I think it's a little premature to open the parent portal and figure out how to use Power School. But I do think that it's important that now we can have a continuum of learning that we're tracking through the system. As for our enrollment update, we are at 682 as of October 1st. Again, we did upload. So the chart that we had shared last time has also been updated for you to peruse. We did conduct our first learning walk as an administrative team at Burnham School. Learning experience for Mrs. Gallo. She got to see how the elementary students participate. And I think that really the beautiful thing about it is that we're gonna see some continuity through all of the grade levels. So our focus is on student engagement this year. What are some of those teacher actions that are creating that student engagement? How are we measuring that? How are we tracking that? We do have a checklist that when we go in, we are very focused. And again, this is not about teachers. This is really about how are we making certain that our students' experience at school is meaningful and that we are creating opportunities for learning. We also, this month, had our district executive PTO meeting. And what that is, is that the board members from each of the PTOs in the town were able to come together. Things that we recognized at the first meeting was that sometimes combining efforts and getting some bulk pricing is going to help all of our PTOs. So things like we all sell lemon pies. Maybe if we, you know, got the efforts together, we're also not hitting up people in the same area twice. So to just make certain that we can reduce some of those redundancies. I also want to update you that Brian Pitt and the Video Club did go to New York. Thank you for the approval for that. They were able to go to the AAHSSFF, which had a opening Monday party and concluded with the Teen Indie Awards Show. So our students not only got a chance to see some of those award winning efforts made by others. Their statement was, they have put out some amazing products here, but this gave them that next, that next layer to work towards. What is the new standard of excellence? So getting some of those editing techniques and working with some of the people in the field who are currently doing this day to day. The students just had a remarkable experience. Some athletic updates. We have had significant issues with rescheduling this season. The amount of rain dates. Then, as Mr. Parachi has shared with me, he has never in the past had two days later where we still haven't drained the fields. And that's not a problem that's been unique to Chapag. This has been statewide. But additionally, he wants to let people know we don't have the amount of officials needed. Right now, there is a very small pool. This month alone, there are nine blackout dates where there are no officials available for us. And so to know that they're really, if you know somebody who's willing to do it, if you are a spectator, be nice to our officiants, we want them back. But to say that right now, it is something that is impacting our ability to schedule appropriately. I do also want to highlight our cross-country program. They've had a really good season. Our boys are six and two, girls are seven and one. And their one loss was due to one of their top runners being sick. So to know that they really are in good standing. Right now, they are favorited to win the Berkshire League Championship. So, go Chapag. And I also want to share with you that I had reported I was going to have a conversation at the Gunn Memorial Library. That did happen on October 4th. And I want to thank Kim Gallo for coming and joining me. It was a mixed crowd. We had some interesting, interested parents. We had some community members seeking additional answers. And we had those who were just coming out to support our schools. And I think what the takeaway was, the biggest question we had is that if their child goes to Chapag, how do they guarantee that they get to benefit from this program? So that seems to be the question that came up the most. Enrollment has a lot of questions. And some of those that we have to table until we have more information. Our applications are due on January 4th, 2019. So that is coming up. Oh, one other thing that I do, I missed it on my announcements. One of the very exciting, we have won the Cabe Bonnie B. Carney Award of Excellence for Educational Communications. So two of our newsletters from last year won awards that will be recognized by the Cabe Association. So kudos to our communications. Oh, personnel? Can't get rid of this microphone. All right. Also, I do have to announce, we have two personnel agenda items. We have the appointment of Jeffrey Martorelli. He is a custodian at Washington Primary School. He had been doing some long-term sub-work for us. It did an excellent job. And so now he will be our night custodian at Washington Primary. And we do have a resignation of Todd Dyer. He is our Director of School Counseling. It is effective on November 2nd. It is a sadness that we have, but we know that this is something that he is seeking some different opportunities. I'm going to tell you before he's leaving, we have a succession plan. We've been working to make certain that all students are covered and are ready for their college applications, that we are making certain that GPAs and grades and everything are all set.
Megan, just a question about the Power School update that you were... Is that something that we should be looking for more information in region in review as you continually look at Power School? And I guess the other question is if, you know, if a parent did have a question or concern about Power School, who should they direct that to?
They should direct that to the building administrator for questions and concerns. As far as the user experience, our hope is is that as we are cleaning up our data, there should be no change in the user experience other than to have more information that is provided to them. One of the things that we have to be very systematic about is because Power School houses the information that we utilize for the state, we can't just go and re-enter into all the other fields because then it looks like we've duplicated data. So we need to make certain that we are being systematic about how we transfer over the information. So this way, our state reporting is not impacted. The fields are still reading off of one another. And we have a better experience as far as tracking and trending data.
The, you mentioned the state. As far as Power School is concerned, is there a baseline of requirements for Power School? Or is it truly up to each district how they want to use and do use Power School?
No, there are absolute requirements for the data that you provide to the state. And it's how that data is provided. We can typically do an upload from Power School, which, which is how we've been able to do our state reporting. However, right now, what we're finding is that the fields aren't always talking to one another. So for example, we have to add the parent's address in twice, whereas it should just be a copy to one field and it reads all the way through.
This has nothing to do with Power School. I just want to tell you that I was at the presentation that Kim and Megan made in Washington, and it was fantastic. It was so positive. They were quite the team. And I heard nothing but really positive responses. And even when it sounded, it looked like it was gonna turn the other way, it turned. And it was very positive. So I just was really excited. And I just wanted to say you did a fantastic job. So, well done.
I just wanted to acknowledge all the years of service that Todd Dyer has given to Region 12. He's worked very hard for us. And he will be sorely missed. He's been head of our guidance department for many years and really brought the program up through the ramp procedures and has made it a wonderful program. He was a coach for many years. And I just want to acknowledge his contribution to our community.
Thank you. All right, next agenda item, our committee reports. And I'll lead that off. We, the next, the next item on our agenda for the digital committee is one to schedule the next meeting. But in particular, we're gonna put our policy hats on and help with the policy committee on several key items. One of them is cybersecurity. The other one would be data privacy, data retention. It's, it's all in that, in that theme. It's, it's been written up in the Cabe newsletter. There was an article recently, I think in this week's Voices with another school district with issues of data privacy coming to the surface. So I think it's, this is what we talked about at the last committee meeting, that these were important. And so we're gonna, we're gonna focus on them first and next. So with that, Michelle, back to you.
At Advance, I had the annual meeting and budget presentation last month. I was unable to attend that meeting, but from what I've heard, everything went well. So I have nothing additional to report.
Michael, education.
Since we, we didn't have a new meeting since the last I reported to, to you guys. So, kind of thing new there.
Greg, facilities.
The facilities committee met this evening. We had a shortened meeting, squeezing it in between the building committee and this meeting. But we did speak with Steve Bothello from Garland Roofing. And the meeting was basically taken up with a discussion of the roofs on several of the buildings in the, in the region. In particular, we started with this building. We had had Garland do an infrared study of the roof. And as a result of that study, they have discovered quite a number of areas. And they also did inspection of the roof. Quite a number of areas where the insulation underneath is wet, which indicates there's some leaking going on. Seems to be mostly at seams and at areas where we have roof projections like HVAC equipment and whatnot. And those areas will need to be repaired if it's not to get worse in the near future. And so what they are doing is, you know, he had done a full walkover of the roof. There are a number of areas that need some attention. The roof is generally in good condition considering its age of 18 years. It's got a 20-year warranty. And the drainage is very good on the roof. But there is a lot of mineral loss. Mineral is the substance that's put on top in order to protect the asphalt layers of the roof. The roof consists of two layers of roofing felt with an asphalt rubber material on it, asphalt and rubber combination material on it. And that was that mineral is the protection of that asphalt from UV radiation, which will, in short order, once the sun hits that roof, material underneath the mineral for a long period of time, it'll destroy it. And then you'll have to replace the roof. So what he did say is that we, by addressing this thing now, we are being quite, we're being proactive. And we now have options available to us, which we wouldn't have if we waited too long before we did this. And that's really the good news. We discussed three potential options for this roof. One of them is to basically do a significant renovation of the roof, which would be replacing, basically, basically putting down a board, some type of board, and then putting a new roof on top of the existing roof, kind of like a second layer. This is something that would probably end up costing us four and a half to five million dollars to do that. We also could do a complete replacement of the roof down to the decking for about six and a half to seven million dollars. But because our existing roof is in really good shape, it's well bonded and it's not delaminating, he offers us a renovation, a restoration rather, which is another option, which would involve basically making some modifications to the top layer of the asphalt and adding a new mineral, spraying on a new mineral thing. This would give us a roof that would be warranted for 15 years and would cost about 1.1 million dollars. And we could, if we kept it maintained and well done, we could continuously replace it with these renovations. And so basically, for the cost of getting a 30 to 20 to 30-year solution of replacing the entire roof down to the deck for seven million dollars, you could probably keep doing these renovations. Maybe not forever. At some point, they may cease to be effective. But you could possibly get 50 or 60 years of roof for, for the cost of replacing it and getting 20 to 30. So we're gonna look into these. We're gonna seek bids, come back to you with some numbers. But before we can actually do this, the first thing that has to happen is we need to fix those wet areas. We need to go in, open up the roof, remove the bad insulation, replace it, and then seal those areas of the roof. It's a repair project somewhere. We don't have a bid for it yet, but we expect it to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $75,000 to $100,000. If we don't do that, then we're gonna end up putting ourselves in a position for a much more costly repair. So the idea is, we will come back to you with some bidding numbers to give us an idea of the cost for that repair and for the, probably the restoration of the roof. That's the direction I think we're gonna recommend. And our view would be that the restoration is something we would want to do within the next year. We'd want to coordinate with AgSTEM to make sure we're not doing anything that interferes or causes us to have too many penetrations of, you know, of this, of the roof. But that, that coordination can be done. So this is probably something we're gonna have to do in the near term if we are gonna keep a roof on this building and not have to spend seven million dollars to completely redo it. So that's this building. We've got a few issues with the Burnham roof. There are some areas that need some attention on that building. And we're gonna come back with some information on that, more information on that. The roof at Washington Primary, the roof over the library, has significant leakage. It is physically leaking into the building. The insulation is wet in numerous areas. And that roof is gonna have to be replaced. It's about 3,000, it's about 3,100 square feet. And I don't, we don't have a bid or a cost on that yet, but we're expecting that to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $90,000 to fix that roof. There's another small area that needs attention. Then, the central office. The roof itself is not in bad shape. However, the roof has an internal gutter into the building. And then it goes through that, you know, through, into, in the edge of the roof structure. And then that goes into downspouts on the outside of the building, which you can see on the outside of the building. That internal gutter is rotted. It's in bad shape and it's gonna have to be addressed. And the question is, do you do that? His suggestion is he's probably gonna come at us with a plan that will involve simply removing it and replacing it with external gutters. And, and then using either the existing downspouts or new downspouts, if that's necessary, if they're in bad shape. He also will come back to us with a plan for replacing the roof on that building, because it is getting toward the end of its useful life. So he'll give us a replacement plan as well. So we have those options and we know what the costs and what the, you know, the things are. So this is the direct result of having a region with four very old buildings. Five, if you count the central office. And so we're gonna have to tend to these. And if we tend to them proactively, we will save the region money in the long run, a significant amount of money. And that's why we're, we're sort of on top of that. Sorry for the long presentation, Jim.
Yeah. Specifically with regard to this roof, you mentioned that it was under warranty, 18 to 20-year warranty. It's 18 years old. Will any of the expenses be covered by warranty?
Probably not without...
A battle.
Pain. The, the report we got from the company that put the roof on this building is that it's aging normally.
Except the asbestos is wet, or the insulation is...
Yeah, except that it's leaking and there's insulation that's wet. Other than that, it's aging normally. Apparently, it's normal for a roof to leak during its warranty period. But we're working on that.
Are any of the other roofs covered by, still under warranty?
Well...
You know?
One would think, I think the one, I can't remember now. Don is the one, I don't think any of them are still covered by warranties. Burnham might be. I think that's only about nine years old.
Okay.
Some minor, some leaks there. Oh, and by the way, on Burnham, another thing we're, we're gonna have to consider in the very near future is the fact that the Mansard roof on that building is slate. It is fast approaching its 100th birthday. And it's not there yet. But at some point in time, that roof is gonna have to be replaced. So that's something to keep in mind. We're, we're, we're looking at it and trying to see what the condition of it is and how long we have on that. So we'll keep you posted. More information to follow, Michelle.
I'm wondering if the roof repairs are eligible expenditures for the 1%, for the, for the, they could, could be? Okay, good.
Could be, capital.
Well, it's capital, but it's a repair. Usually, I know if we put a new roof on, it is. But I wasn't sure if a repair would qualify. Do you think? Okay. So would you anticipate doing the Chapag roofs before the winter?
The Chapag roof would not be done until the spring at the earliest. The repairs would be done in the fall. And then the roof would be, if we were gonna restore it, do a restoration, that would probably be done in the spring. The idea is we would want to bid it as a single job, bid it now, so that what you get is the most, the lowest price, because the, the spring work would be the first thing out of the barn for the spring, and therefore you get the more aggressive pricing.
But the repairs, you mean this fall?
Repairs should be done this fall. We should not wait...
Before the snow.
Before the snow, yeah. We should, we should not wait on that because it's, it's not gonna get better, it's gonna get worse.
Yeah, but that's soon.
Yeah. John?
I wanted to, probably Kim or Don would be better off to address this. What are the current issues or expenses that exist because of the leaks that are occurring almost daily, I guess? Is there, what's the hassle?
Okay. Is that working?
Yeah.
Right now, we haven't spent a lot of money repairing the roof. Every year for the last nine years, we go up and we maintain the roof up here so that we could keep the warranty active. Last fall, the mineral surface that you saw degrading, the sand layer, started bothering me. I called Firestone. We got them up here, the regional vice president, the regional manager, and a district manager. They walked the roof and, like Greg said, they said it's a normal, normal wear. I didn't believe that. So I, for the last nine years, have been dealing with Garland. And the reason I deal with them is they're a roofing manufacturer. They produce roofing materials. The gentleman that was here is a regional engineer sales for the, for this Northeast region. His time and his effort is free. I utilize him and his company because they constantly evaluate their materials and try to identify how to make them better. When you purchase their product, what you get is, they go out to bid using the Garland product. The winning bidder is overseen by the Garland Company and Steve himself when they apply it. So it's done to the company's specifications. So you end up with a much better product and you end up with much better solutions, like Greg had said. In the end, I don't want an architect telling us what to do with our roof. These people know them much better. I hate to, you know, go that way around, but it needed to be said. We haven't spent a lot of money yet on these particular issues. We continuously maintain the roof. And it's about $3,000 to $5,000 a year I put up on top. Right now, right behind us in C24 is the worst leak I have. And Steve's company sent me some repair material and it's $300 worth of material. It'll take us a couple hours to, to apply it. And we suspect we can solve the problem we've got in there temporarily. Like Greg says, many of the problems are, and this is why Firestone probably won't come back and give you a warranty or, or money. Because many of the problems can be pointed to, well, that your air conditioning unit is, is leaking or that antenna that's up there doing this and the pitch boxes around it are being pulled. And well, that's leaking. And it is true that those areas do leak. But there are others where the seams have rolled up and things like that.
More immediately, what is exactly happening inside the building? Is there standing water because of the leaks? Buckets have to be emptied and...
This room, as far as I'm aware, this room is the only one with some buckets. Oh, and the faculty area, we've had to take out some...
Was anything getting destroyed, i.e. the carpeting, the tile?
So far, we've been on top of it. And the answer is no, we haven't destroyed anything. The tile, the carpet, the ceiling tiles are probably the worst part of it. And they're not that expensive. But the fact of the matter is, it's not gonna get any better now that we've identified what the problem is and where the leaks are. But Firestone basically turned their head and walked away and said everything was normal. Well, at this point, there's only been two light fixtures and they're $100 apiece, you know? I mean, we haven't, it's not, we're not talking about thousands of dollars worth of material at this point, right? Sure.
Okay, no, that's not, no problem.
Don, I don't, I know that there was also the concern about the server room that was brought up to you.
Well, that was brought up this morning. Well, that was brought up this morning and I'm not familiar with it, so, um, Vic was just concerned that he had heard. Um, some drips above one of the servers and we could, we could provide a a a simple, low-cost solution for him. So the servers won't get damaged. But yeah, I wasn't aware of that till this morning, yeah, and um, thank you for reminding me. It's on my list back on my desk, but.
I would, I would believe so, yeah. Yeah, we will be back to you at our at your, our next meeting. With a recommendation, uh, to to have that, to execute on a bid for that work so that we can, we can repair the roof. And stop these leaks and stop these potential problems in the short term.
Yeah, what? Yeah, I know that, um. Gene Horgan looked into this subject, I guess, years ago when the roof was last done and. So I'm bringing it up again just for the heck of it to see if you thought about it or if anybody looked into it, the the. Chance of, uh, with doing roofwork, putting, um, solar panels on the roof. Um, I know that we had always talked, I think there was an analysis done, if I recall, that may have. Pre- precluded us from ever worrying about it again because it came up unsuccessful, I think. I don't remember how it worked. Three times? And that's because it doesn't get enough. Okay. Oh, okay. And so nothing has changed as far as technology since they did that. No, I mean, they they moved them now, you know.
Terms of the building's changed.
Yeah.
What's changed in technology, I don't know if, I don't know if somebody would look at it given the age of the roof.
It would have to go on top of the roof anyway regardless.
And and also you can't forget, when you add things to the roof of the building, you have to make sure you don't exceed the live load of the building. And you also have to figure out how you're gonna get snow off the roof of that building. Because right now, what happened, you remember, a few years ago, we had that 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 snowplow. Uh, we had snowplows up there, not snowplows, but guys with snow blowers blowing the the snow off the roof in stages. You had to blow the edge off, then you had to blow the snow next to that, next to the edge, then you had to blow that off. And Don, how much snow did we remove from that roof? Seven point five million pounds. So at some point in time, the weight of the solar panels and the weight of the snow. Start to exceed the live load capacity of the roof and then you've got a potential for collapse. Uh, the second problem you've got is if you fill the roof with a solar array, how are you gonna get the snow off? Without going up there and hand digging it off the roof? And if we get one of those snows that that has seven million pounds of snow, you know, snow that's three feet tall, three feet deep or more. Uh, I think that's gonna be a labor nightmare, so. As nice as it would be to have some alternative energy source. Uh, the roof is probably not the place for it.
All right, Stephanie, finance.
Uh, finance committee was suspended last, uh, last time with the Board of Ed meeting, but. Uh, some of the agenda items were, uh, we received a member's equity distribution check from Kerma. Our distribution for twenty eighteen was nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Um, we'll be reviewing the TPS Group report on non-certified pension plans. And, uh, we'll do an update on the status of the twenty seventeen eighteen audit so far to date. The last time we met, expenditures were tracking to budget at about six point three percent left, which is. Normal for a year, so we'll have more to report next time. After we get through the next agenda.
Thank you.
Yep.
Greg, negotiations?
Well, as you can see from the agenda, we have completed our negotiations with the, uh, union representing the custodian cafeteria cafeteria. Workers and, uh, that, uh, we have for discussion in executive session tonight and possible action approving that contract afterwards. And we are about to, um. Commence, uh, negotiations in November with the union representing the, uh. Clerical and paraprofessionals. And after that, we will have a negotiation at some point with the union representing the administrators. They have, that process is starting and we'll probably start those negotiations sometime in the near future. So that's where we stand on negotiations.
Thank you. Michelle, policies?
Yeah, we met this evening. Um, we had a really, uh, great productive meeting with our, uh, school resource officer, so that was. Um, I thank Rich for coming to that and we have three policies on our agenda for tonight. Um, work that we did the previous month, so I'll explain them. That's it.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is, uh, our standing item of the AgriScience update. Megan?
Okay, so we have been very busy and again, I cannot say enough about Lori Travato's energy and she has been through. All the schools, getting her recruitment done, um, additionally seeking out grants, just looking for opportunities and and events. Um, so thus far, um, a lot of our conversations and misunderstandings with some of our sending towns. Um, has been the transition away from Nanawag to Chappagh. Um, so we're able to clarify that common application, um, that we are listed as on the state that. They are sending their students to Chappagh. Um, and that clarification that they're sending all new students to Chappagh. Students who are already at Nanawag are grandfathered in and will continue out. So we have been talking in terms of transportation, um, how we're gonna make certain that. You know, they can, they don't have to incur a lot of costs during their transition, so. Um, and that's also one of the reasons that, uh, we were looking at our calendars. We're also looking at some of our sending schools calendars. To see how we can make certain that we're getting some regional connections with, say, days off and, uh, making certain we have some continuity for all of those students regardless. Um, so it's been very positive interactions with the superintendents. They've appreciated some of those heads up and they are excited about the transition in. Um, they hear very positive things about Chappagh, so we're an easy sell. Yay. Um, but and Lori Travato is working to build her advisory board. Uh, we actually got to visit an organic farm in Kent. Um, but she's also recognizing, um, some of those new connections that we're going to explore. Uh, the New Milford Youth Co- Coalition. Is another one that, um, as we've been going to some of these farmers markets and finding some of these network opportunities and. We absolutely think some of our community members who've given us some of these leads, they're, they're making networking opportunities for us, so it's been very positive. Um, one of the things that we are batting around and I would love feedback from the board is. As we're recognizing the importance of our brand and we keep, we've moved away, if you haven't noticed, from saying AgSTEM. To AgriScience. Um, and part of this is because we recognize that STEM has been happening here at Chappagh and we don't want. The AgriScience program to overshadow everything that is happening here, so we have been calling it the AgriScience program. But that's a disconnect from how a lot of our community members have been coining the phrase and so. It is one that as we're trying to wrestle with, um, that that name, that, you know, how do we wanna present ourselves? Um, always open to ideas, always would love, um, input from the board on things that you're thinking. Um, but at this point, we wanna be timeless. We wanna know that we're innovative. We wanna know we're forward-thinking. And we don't wanna get caught up on whether it's STEM or it's STEAM or meets. Um, you know, where we are with it, so that way it doesn't become something that's tongue-in-cheek. It is something that is forward-thinking, that we're innovative and our program is elevating AgriScience.
Greg?
Sorry, I didn't have these materials here. Uh, the building committee, um, met this evening. And, uh. As you know, we had bidding. We opened the bids on the fourth of October. Uh, and the bids came in, uh, the the low, the the, you know, the way this bidding process works, let me tell you a little bit about the process. You end up with bids and you're looking at, you're looking at the low bids and you look at what they total up. To get an idea of where the job is and then you realize that you have to go through those bids, they have to be vetted. You have to determine whether or not they're conforming, whether they miss things, whether they're really the bid we're likely to get. And then you sort of move to the position of having, i- if that bid is not gonna work, you move to the position of having the next low, the next low bid in there. And, um, and so that's generally the way the process works. Um, we did receive bids that the low bids in the aggregate totaled approximately one hundred eighty-five, one hundred eighty thousand dollars under budget. Uh, for where we have the job budgeted. Some of those bids have some issues. And, um, were we to. Were we to just simply move to take the second bidder? Um, on the ones that have issues or concerns, uh, the job would be approximately seven hundred thousand dollars over budget. And we have, uh, ONG has decided that they wanna send some of this work back out to bid. They wanna rebid it because they believe they can, they they've made some changes in the bid, which would should reduce the cost of the of the work that needs to be done. And so we expect to get numbers closer to our, uh, our, uh, you know, being on target. But remember, e- when you say seven hundred thousand over budget, that's still including. A million four hundred thousand dollar owner's contingency and a million two hundred thousand dollar general contractor's contingency. So technically, we're still way under budget. Even with being putatively over budget. Um, because we still have the contingencies. So if we were to accept the second bids and go with that route, then we would still, we we would still be under budget, but we'd be under budget, but we don't, our contingency would be reduced. From about a million four to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars or thereabouts. So we're gonna rebid some of that work, we're gonna accept, we've accepted some of that work and we're gonna, we're gonna move on and. Um, we should get to the point where we bring the job in. Pretty close to budget and have the ability to claw back some of the, uh, alternates that we've, we've done. You know, that we identified as potential ad alts, that we could get back to where we wanted the job to be originally. So that's, that's more or less where it is. I will tell you that this evening. Uh, we accepted a, uh, we accepted a bid for the site work. Um, with, and we accepted four of the adults, um. With a reservation of a right to cancel them, uh, by January if we decide not to go forward with them. Because if we, if we don't add them into the project. And we bring these adults in later, things like the extra athletic field and other things, if we bring those in later, they count as change orders. And the state only permits five percent of the project budget to be change orders, so that would be. Five percent of thirty-four million, so it would be one point seven million dollars. So in order not to, in order not to use up our change order capacity, we're gonna put those things in now and then decide whether to go with them or cancel them. Uh, so the, so the the bid for site work ends up being seven million three hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, we have accepted, uh, the acoustical work, uh, for, um, a a number that I think is a hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred dollars with one alternate, one alternate. Uh, we've accepted the fire-stopping bid of forty-five thousand dollars and the fire protection bid of six hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred, five hundred and sixty dollars. We've rejected our bids for concrete sidewalk and curves. We've rejected our bids and we're gonna rebid our masonry. We've rejected and we'll rebid the drywall and we've rejected and we'll rebid the plumbing. The rest are still being evaluated. Uh, but we expect the rest to come in, uh, as, you know, we expect them to be okay when we're done with the rest of them. So we're making progress. We hope by the twenty-ninth of the month, we will have accepted bids or decided to rebid. Um, all of the remaining work. The only thing we won't know about are the four ones. That we're going to send out for rebidding now. That'll take us a little bit into November before we get the results of those bids back. And at that point in time, we should be moving in the direction of starting work. Uh, we now, since we're accepting site work, they can start the site work, um, in November. Um, beginning of November and the project will start and the rest of the work is not time-critical to getting the project done. So we will have clawed back of the five weeks that we were delayed. Five to six weeks that we were delayed, uh, we will have clawed back two weeks of that. Uh, at this point in time. So we're making progress toward a. Speedy resolution of the project. And that's where we are.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Greg.
Well, as you've heard from Greg, there's a lot of issues that are open and outstanding, so all I'm gonna do is. At this point, we've spent up to this point. Two million six hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars on the design work. And also the pending payments that we have in the house. Uh, until we get these bids resolved, we can't come to a final resolution of what, where we stand, uh, on this overall. Because there's too many open items on that bidding list. So that's the extent of the report at this point. Hopefully, we get the bids in. And we add those in with what we have and we'll know what the contingency is left for us and also the bottom-line price.
Any questions for Bob? All right, move on to, uh, the next, uh, item, new topics and updates. I'll hand you.
I'd like to invite up a student presenter. So my friend Abby Gora, much like her mother, rises to a challenge. And so at this time, I'm gonna turn the mic over to Abby for a Cave Recognition Award.
My name is Abby Gora and I'm here tonight to present my mom, Michelle, with an award from the Cave Board Member Academy. This award distinguishes her as a certified Board of Education member for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. My mom was one of only nine board members across the state to earn this title. She did so by participating in twenty hours of Board Academy credits. She studied such topics as board relations with the superintendent, with the community and with each other. Policy, curriculum, school finance, school law, labor relations and board operations. These categories represent every type of workshop that is offered by the academy. According to Cave, these areas of study are designed to strengthen leadership skills and give members of. A firm foundation in the essential governance skills needed to carry out their responsibilities. Cave President Robert Mitchell said these board members have rightfully placed an importance on their own professional development. Focusing on a range of relevant topics, including fiscal operations and positive school climate. My mom takes her responsibility as a board member very seriously and I'm proud to present her with this award.
Congratulations. Thank you, Abby.
Bet you didn't see that coming, huh, Michelle?
I didn't, I didn't know why she was here, but she didn't tell me.
Can I see?
Yeah.
All right. Next on the agenda is smarter balance assessment results, uh, Stavrida.
Good evening, everyone. Happy fall. Hope you're enjoying the cool weather. So I did, um, share with you. The packet for tonight's presentation. Uh, I know that it was put in the Board of Ed packet with the agenda. So I'm gonna go through our results. And I will certainly answer questions as well. Just to start off regarding the smarter balance assessments. Just to reiterate, we have been administering this assessment for several years as it did replace, um, the CMT. For English Language Arts and Mathematics. On page one, there in the boxes, we have the actual knowledge and skills that are measured. So under English Language Arts, reading, writing, listening and research. And under Mathematics, Concepts and Procedures, Problem Solving, Modeling and Data Analysis and Communicating Reasoning. On page two, I included for you. The actual four levels that are the reported achievement levels. Level one would be for a student that does not meet the achievement standard. Level two would be for a student approaching this achievement standard. Three, the student meets the achievement standard and four, the student exceeds the achievement standard. In the results that I'm going to present this evening. The percentages will actually be of students. Who meet levels three and four. Still on page two, I wanted to present with you, uh, for you some graphics there to help explain how. Student results are calculated. And in the center there, the dots that you see with the vertical lines represent students. And there is a margin of error, which means that on any given day, a student is expected to perform within. a student is expected to perform within that span for that line. And depending on where they land in respect to the horizontal expectation of achievement, that's the solid line that you see going across that graphic, determines how their results are reported to families. So I have outlined for you in the blue, um, squares that the circled area, those particular students are clearly above the horizontal line and they get a check mark because they are above standard. The single student that is below that line and you see an exclamation point in the blue square box, that student would be below standard. And off to the left are samples of students whose actual work and margin of error touch the line. So it doesn't matter whether it's above or below, but it actually touches the line. And that's the equal sign that is represented there, that the student is, um, at or near that particular standard. Underneath that, I took some snapshots of the reports that now are sent home to families. Because you see on the left, the three areas that measure English Language Arts. So you see the reading and you see a check mark. Because for that particular claim, the student is above standard and it aligns with the graphic that's above. The listening, you see an equal sign, so the student is approaching standard. And then for writing and research for this particular example, it's a, um, a check mark, again, above standard. And then to the right of that, the reports now actually show the previous year and the current year. And that is for students, um, in fourth through eighth grade. We can now actually have that visual that shows how a student performed the year before and where they are the following year. All of the student reports were mailed home last month, with the exception of eighth grade. The eighth grade reports, we are still waiting for those from the State Department of Education. And I did include that information in all the letters that were mailed home. So on page three are the actual results. And these charts do show how students performed from the onset of the smarter balanced assessment. There is color coding there for you to actually see a group of students from year to year by school. I'm at the elementary level and then feeding into the secondary school below that. So every year, we do look deeply at the student results. Um, and we're looking for growth from year to year. And we're also looking for growth even horizontally, how we're performing, um, within the same grade from year to year. And looking at the first school represented there, when you follow a cohort by following the color coding, um, we typically are increasing and students are strengthening their performance. The middle school there, Burnham, I, I do have to acknowledge, um, the hundred percent. We continue to see grades where all the students are meeting the achievement levels, performing at levels three or four, and that's designated there as well. Uh, for, uh, WPS, again, the same type of color coding, representing the grades in years and following cohorts. We did have a surprise and a, a concern regarding, um, the results for third grade for English Language Arts. And I have to tell you that the group of students, um, struggled in third grade as a group. They, they had a challenging year developmentally. But it was an all hands on approach. That class is not even recognizable this year. When I walk into fourth grade, it's like I'm looking at a completely different group of students. They have, um, overcome those challenges and what they're doing now in class, I can tell you with confidence, they are performing on grade level. So we are looking to have that same result that we're seeing in the classroom reflect this year's smarter balanced results. For whatever reason, developmentally, it was a, it was a challenging, um, year for them. So a lot of structure, they needed a lot of structure and it really has paid off significantly based on just walking into the classroom and seeing how they are today compared to how they were, um, in the prior school year. When you're looking at English Language Arts for, um, secondary level school, we do see, um, areas where from year to year, there is growth. And then there are areas where the group is stepping back. And so we're really looking very carefully at that. Um, we do want by the end of eighth grade to really solidify any potential gaps. We do go back and look at previous years. Are there things that we can do foundationally to assist students? Um, but if you look, um, horizontally there, you know, we're hoping to continue to have a, a different trend where each year will have that increase substantially. Mathematics, same type of pattern as far as the way the, um, data is represented with the highlights representing the particular groups. There are certain results here that, um, just don't make sense. We are looking at the fourth grade results, um, from Booth Free School in math and taking a very close look at the students now in fifth grade to assure that, um, they are meeting grade level expectations and putting in place interventions that may be needed. Um, so that one really, we, we could not explain, but we're looking very closely now and working with the administration and, um, the teacher as well. In addition, um, looking at, uh, Burnham School, we're continuing to see the hundred percent for the same groups of students who performed a hundred percent, level three and four for English Language Arts and Literacy. The other thing I want to share with you is when our numbers are so small, just two children drop down the percentages. And I won't tell you exactly, you know, which particular grade, but it's astonishing how much a percentage drops when you have so few children. And so we do look very carefully at each individual child to make sure that their needs are being met and that we're hopefully providing the environment for them to feel comfortable taking this type of an assessment. Are there questions on this particular page?
Teresa, there's actually two questions. Um, you mentioned that, uh, we have particularly small cohorts and that can have an outsized effect on the statistics. Is that taken into consideration by the state or no?
No. No.
The other question I had was help, um, the board understand if you can, when you identify a, a cohort, a particular, um, grade at a certain school where you have some concerns, there's a drop. Um, can you walk us through what you as an administration do when that occurs?
I, I can give you a very specific example. I alluded to it, um, when I indicated an all hands on deck approach that went from the principal to interventionist, to school psychologist, to additional resources, uh, into that classroom. And that took a while to change behaviors so that the students could really demonstrate what they're learning. And, and it's a completely different environment this year. It's, it's like they were going through growing pains and they were very visible growing pains.
Has that, um, approach changed over time, uh, in terms of the, what the administrative team does? Um, when you're looking kind of a, at a diagnostic level and how you're approaching it? Has that changed, let's say, from four years ago, from five years ago to today?
I think what might have changed are the additional resources and perhaps the research that's available out there. But we look at individual students and then we do look at a whole group. So if there is one student who, for whatever reason, is disconnected, who is not performing on grade level, the resources are going to be provided are very unique for that particular student. When it's a potential of behaviors that impact other students, so now it's not just an individual student that maybe is withdrawn from the learning, but that the, the behaviors impact others, that approach is very different. Uh, because we can't remove every student from a classroom, but we have to give them the tools to be able to cope and to be able to be respectful and not disrupt the learning for others. And so when I meant a hands-on approach for structural purposes, it really was, uh, that type of intense, everyday interaction.
Greg? So what's your expectation of when the scores on here, some of which are extraordinarily underwhelming, when those will be back up to the levels that we have expectations for?
I, I think you'll see it rather quickly because, um, we absolutely don't accept these scores at all. But we want to be very mindful of individual student needs and the cohort as well. Our goal is not to have it repeat. So that we can close that potential gap, whatever caused that potential gap.
Well, you, you, you do seem to have pretty good scores, um, at, at Burnham School. And the question is, are you going to be evaluating the differences in how curriculum is delivered at those schools to see whether there are any correlations which might cause you to want to alter the manner in which you deliver curriculum?
It's interesting you say that because each of the learning environments, each of the schools, each of the schools are very different. So techniques that work in one school because of its size aren't necessarily transferable to another school. So we're recognizing that as well. We have to meet the students that are in front of us, where they're at, and provide the resources that will benefit them and not necessarily just copy what may have worked in another environment. We are definitely finding that there are differences, um, cultural differences within those learning environments , um, because of the size of the schools and their classrooms.
Why, there, there must be something that's, that's driving the fact that in grade three, English Lo- Language Arts Literacy, that, that Burnham is at a hundred percent, uh, and, and Washington Primary is at forty-eight percent. I mean, I, I, I don't think that would account for the differences in the native intelligence of the children in one school to the other. So there must be something seriously wrong at WPS for this year on, on how this is done. Because they went from eighty-one percent to forty-eight, whereas Burnham went from a hundred to a hundred and Booth went from seventy-five to eighty. So I, I just am not getting this. Uh, clearly, there, there's something wrong somewhere.
That is the group that I honed in on. It's not the norm that that would be the performance in third grade at WPS. We have evidence of that already. But I can tell you that that particular group of students needed much more structure and, um, significant intervention than we had experienced before. And that was provided to them. And we certainly did not expect that this was going to be the end result at the end of last school year. But I can tell you, they're a different group of kids this year. So I want to prove to you that the interventions that took place actually have impacted those kids and you'll see that at the end of this school year.
I, I wonder if you wouldn't mind, that's my last question. I wonder if you wouldn't mind next year when you present this to us, um, really circling and highlighting these classes that we had this issue. And so that way, we can see what the results of the intervention were, um, and, or, or as to what they've been effective.
Absolutely, I definitely want to do that. The other thing to keep in mind is when we know what is the situation and what potentially occurred to result in this type of, um, percentage, we can address it. What is most, um, disturbing is when, when we have an anomaly that doesn't make any sense. And in class, we see the kids are performing at grade level, but then there, that doesn't transfer to this type of assessment. That is where we really scratch our heads or, and try, um, different things, but we don't have a clear cut reason why that would happen to a particular child or group of kids. But for that, this particular class that you just highlighted, we absolutely do recognize that there were things happening amongst them that were very challenging for them. And they were having some growing pains in third grade and difficulty adjusting to the demands of third grade. But they are very different this year. They are, they're not a recognizable group of kids compared to where they were with all the work that's been done from last year. You're welcome. Another thing regarding math, we are really honing in to, uh, ensure that by the end of eighth grade, that students have a very strong, solid foundation in algebraic skills. We are going back, um, looking at additional math programs, looking at additional resources so that we don't miss any potential gaps that, um, were created in prior years. So if you look horizontally across that last category there for eighth grade, each year, those percentages continue to increase and that is our goal, that any gaps that could have happened, that we solidify those before they leave eighth grade and go on to high school.
Teresa, I have a question. Um, I know we were talking about the elementary school and we were honing in on third grade, WPS for English, but I'm concerned about the middle school. Those, those grades or those scores across the board for sixth, seventh, and eighth aren't very, I, I don't think that they're very high compared to the elementary schools. Is there, I mean, I know you're spending a lot of time at the elementary level, but what about the middle school?
Absolutely. So you'll see, we're going to look at some samples. The assessments become much more difficult as the students progress, right?
Yeah.
So as you're looking here, there are things here that don't make sense. So for example, in, um, the students who were in eighth grade in two thousand eighteen, the Brown, if you follow the Brown area, that is a, that's a strong group of students. They were at ninety-two percent in seventh grade. It does not make any sense how it is seventy-seven percent. So it's things like that, that we see the performance of how they demonstrate their learning and understanding on grade level in the classroom. And the other piece is when you have just one or two, a couple of kids, just change the whole dynamic.
I know the tests get harder, but so does their level of education in the classroom. So shouldn't that keep up with each other?
Right, so we're looking at both. We're looking to assist them to meet the demands of the way that the assessment becomes more complex and to have what they demonstrate in class reflect that. So, uh, like I said, there are certain areas that just don't make sense. And another thought is, 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 is it too much for them? By the time they take that test, have we done so much preparation, they're like burnt out? What are these things that are happening for students who have performed at such high level? And then not to have that same consistency?
Teresa, can I also interject? And I know that at Chapag, they've been looking at grammar conventions, um, and vocabulary has been a big focus this year, recognizing that we may not have been addressing all of those tools that were necessary for some of the very specific questions. So Lori's not only just working with Chapag, but we're also working at the elementary level to make certain that we're looking at what is the scope and sequence. Um, so to know that there's the analytics that are also going into the test and looking at our curriculum. So I know Teresa's been also exploring that and tapping into some of our experts like Lori Ferreira in order to make certain that we are addressing some of those things, because you're correct.
So for our November PD, for example, Lori and I already planned out how we're going to work through the first through eighth grade together for alignment to make sure that the standards that need to be addressed when they're younger are occurring so that we can get deeper and more complex as they come up and not have to address gaps.
Right, I just don't want to forget about the middle schoolers. I know it's easy to concentrate on the elementary, they're smaller groups, um, it's easier to do intervention. I just really wor- worry about the middle school level, that they're going to fall through the cracks.
We do have a reading lab at the middle school.
Mm-hmm.
And so students who meet the criteria also receive that additional instruction.
I was, I was looking at the- I was I was looking at the math scores.
Right, so we are, like if you look at eighth grade by the end. Um of the columns there by two thousand eighteen, we're trying to address what's happened before then, but by the eighth grade. Each of those years, if you look from two thousand fifteen onto two thousand eighteen increases every single year and we are wanting to build that. But if we can't miss the possibility of gaps from prior years because then you're trying to backfill. And try to teach what was needed before. So we're looking at all aspects. So those are our own internal results and you'll see on the next page, I did um. Do an analysis of our Derg. And so on page four. You will see that um region twelve is performing in the top five. For ELA literacy within our Derg. And on page five, you will see the mathematical. Um performance within our Derg as being second. Correct. As right.
That at uh what what we call mustard yellow or the brown group. Whatever color, I don't know if my screen is just not adjusted. Um so they are now freshmen. Um how are we keeping up with where they're at? I mean, is this only, this spans. Three through eighth grade testing.
Right, so for high school. Correct, eleventh grade. They take the SAT. There's no other state standardized assessment in high school other than the eleventh grade.
So we won't see testing scores for them again for another two years.
Correct.
Is there any other way to kinda keep track to make sure when they get to?
So we do internal PSATs. We administer that to all the students in tenth grade. And already start to have the um teachers looking at those particular results as well. It's a very different assessment. It's it's a whole other world um taking the high school assessment compared to the elementary and middle.
Does the board get like an overview of what's happening in those years? Just so we can kind of track along with them to see where they're going, just cuz that's one of those. Kind of disconcerting trends that, you know. Following a cohort that was doing very well, it kinda seems to be dropping off a little bit.
So we come back when they take the standardized assessment in eleventh grade.
So the board won't see any of the progress until then. We don't really get.
We don't, it's not measurable, it's not apples to apples. It's very different. And in math in particular. You have students taking advanced math. You have other students that, you know, they might not make it to Algebra II by junior year when it's the SAT. It becomes very personalized and where the student is then selecting their courses at that time.
So you said that you have a reading interventionist for the middle school, but do you have math?
No.
And so the question is, is that those students who aren't elementary, who have math intervention. Then come to sixth grade and don't at all. And that's not being addressed. And that's been going on for a while.
Right, so I did put in a request to add that position to the budget and it was denied.
Every year?
The past couple of years.
Because I, for me, that seems to be. I I just know that parents who have their students, that being addressed in elementary school. And then it and then liter- it drops off in sixth grade. That's a huge discrepancy. Um and to be able to have the support for reading and not for math, I think is a a really big concern and I think that this is.
Completely understand. And schools are language-based, right? They're just, you know, they're language-based and and math, you know, can be pretty difficult.
But if you have, if you're, you have the support for the students and then you take it away. That that really becomes a huge issue.
So I I think just to follow up. With what she's saying, I think we uh we're incumbent as a board to remember come budget time, this conversation. I don't think we we can afford collective amnesia on this one.
It never got discussed at this level. Would get discussed in the presentations of individual budgets. But I don't, you know, there are areas we're focusing on. We have concerns. We don't take this lightly. Um and and we're certainly not the only ones when you look at the overall Derg performance. Um because we are performing at the top of our Derg in both categories. Pages six and beyond. I provided some sample questions. It's been quite a few years. Um since we had sort of a workshop model retreat where I. Talked about the Common Core standards and shared what questions are like. So I thought it might be beneficial for you to actually see what students are asked to do. And keep in mind that. There are many variables that go into a student's performance on any given day that they take an assessment. They could take it today and they take it again next week and it's two completely different results. Um and unfortunately with math. Sometimes they just make calculation errors and then your whole answer is wrong. Not that you don't know how or understand the concept. But unfortunately, that does happen. So on page six, this is a sample of a reading. Claim question where the student, this is about um sap and um making maple syrup. And it talks about a particular family that makes it. And then it brings in um. Some factual information and a legend here. And the student then at the bottom of page seven, you'll see. I gave a snapshot of the screen, so you have the full length reading. But on their computer, it is divided up the half. Screen there on the left is the reading and the question is on the right. And they can expand it. There are little arrows. They can expand it all the way out, read it and then expand it back and look at the question. And this question, the student has to select. The two choices that um most likely are the reason the author included the less, the legend in the passage. So they have to select the two choices that the writers of this question feel are the right answer. For this passage. On page eight. There are mistakes. Grammatical mistakes listed and the student has to select two sentences that have mistakes in punctuation. Then I put some samples in there that are math samples. Um this question three, five, three, three, the student has to look at each equation. And they have to select whether that equation is true or false. And they have to get. All three correct. They can't just get one and get partial credit. They have to get all three correct. Under that, you have a problem-solving question. Called Go Green regarding recycling. And then it continues on um. Page nine, and there's a table of information that the students need to review. And um then finally on page ten, begin the questions. And this is all third grade, so. Everything you've seen so far are sample items for third graders who take it for the very first time. And so they, there is um a little keypad with numbers that they can use to complete their answers. And then there's open-ended um question there where they have to use words to clearly explain. Um the actual parameters identified within the question. Page eleven continues. That's another question from the Go Green sample. And then at the bottom, they have to use the table to actually select all the answers that apply. A little different than when we may have taken standardized tests where you only had to select one. Here you have to select. All that apply. And continuing on page twelve, still dealing with the same third grade math question, they now need to fill in these blanks. Um for what information they had gathered. Underneath that on page twelve, communicating reasoning. Um here, they are asked to actually determine which is greater. The two thirds or two fourth, they they have to use an inequality symbol and they have to do some shading. So there is a lot of manipulation. Um with the technology used for the assessment. And then. The last. Third grade questions on the top of page thirteen. And the student has to read this information about items in a bag and then they have to select. The um algebraic equation. All of them, it it says, select all of the equations that show how to find the total number of T. So the third graders would have to be able to do that and understand that as well. Bottom of page thirteen, um I included some grade eight samples. So you have some third grade, you have some eighth grade. Um there are listening tasks on the smarter balanced. And that is, the students have headsets on. It's about a sixty-second clip. If you're really good note takers and really listen carefully. Because the answers that they hear, they've heard something about that in that announcement that they're listening to. But if they're not careful, they may select it for the wrong um question. And they can re- they can listen to it again. They can replay it multiple times. Page fourteen at the top, that is another question that comes from that listening experience. Where the student has to provide the most likely reason that the scientists conducted the study that they heard about. From Memorial Gardens. Then under that, there's a passage. A study on changing memories, a history of the brain, so all informational text. And interestingly, the task they have to do, if you look at the third paragraph. It says the student found another source, click on two sentences in source two. That support the information presented in source one. So it's not like the question even stands out by itself. They have to read source one. Then there is this directive of now look at source two and identify information that supports source one. So they have to really have tremendous attention to detail. There's no time for fatigue. Um with the screen time for this uh assessment because they could easily miss something that's said. Uh and unfortunately, that does happen. We see it in class all the time. Why did you answer the question this way? Oh, I thought it meant this. And only when you have that five-second dialogue, oh, there's an aha moment that they've misinterpreted something they were reading, whether it's math or. A math problem or uh something that is written. Page fifteen here, they're reading about the Oregon Trail. And it's a a long passage. It continues on page sixteen and seventeen. And at the bottom of seventeen is a sample question, what's the author's message about the Oregon Trail? Use details from the text to support your answer. I did highlight there because they do. Have the ability to highlight if they would like within the passage, but again, you see a screenshot of. The passage on the left and you can only see a little bit of it and the question is on the right. Page eighteen, more sample problems for eighth grade. Here we've got um math concepts and procedures. Um and students, again, they're being asked to select all possible values. Um at the bottom, they have to look at the information provided and then they have to solve it. And actually fill in the boxes for adult tickets and child tickets. And they have to get them all both right. They won't get any partial credit. Page nineteen, again, another um example at the top. Where they have to select all equations that can represent a straight line. And then at the bottom, a separate question, modeling and data analysis where really they they are given some measurement. Um information here based on the number of cups and then they have to be able to reason to respond to additional questions. Regarding measurement um for cups that are not shown. And it continues on to page twenty-one. Problems for that same example. And twenty-two. So I did provide some additional resources there, um additional links. And I also included um several districts in Derg's A and B that region twelve students did outperform. So I tried to provide you a comprehensive look into what students experience. But I can tell you that um we do find students who perform and excel well in the classroom. Don't necessarily perform well on this type of assessment. And we're trying to reconcile that. It's one data point. It is not the life story of any child.
Can I go or are you going? Okay, so just a quick question. Since a lot of students come here from New Milford. I see on the bottom summary page, you've listed a lot of larger schools, but New Milford's not there. Should I assume they outperformed us or they just weren't on that list?
They are in a Derg that is below us.
Okay, so they wouldn't have.
Right, they're not even within our Derg, so I looked at wealthier Derg's A and B for that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Cause that was a lot of information and actually. I I'm, thank you for including parts of the test.
You're welcome.
It's it's pretty challenging, looking at some of that, what they're asking of third graders. Maybe I've lost track of what a third grader can do, but um to follow back or circle back to what Stephanie was saying. Um cuz I can't remember, have we, did we find out how our eleventh graders last year did on their?
Nope, that'll be forthcoming.
Okay, so that'll come. Because um. I'm just wondering, um you know, we now have a few years of data of smarter balance and we've been. Um. Doing a lot of curriculum adjustments and alignment within the district to try to adjust to the smarter balance. And I'm I'm curious to see how that translates to our high school students. And it it looks like the students who took the SAT last year. Took smarter balance in two thousand fifteen as eighth graders. Like they'll be the first.
Right.
Cohort and and it only gives us a baseline because we didn't have any, obviously, any time to adjust. And I know that group. Was in between CMTs and had years of double testing and years of none, no testing and. So so we didn't have a a lot of work, but I'm curious. It'll to see how how that translates to their SATs. And also, will you let us know how the PSATs are looking? Like, do we, do you? Have you shared that with us in the past?
We usually do that as an internal.
Okay.
Measurement, yeah.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And just it should be noted that at ninth grade, it is an optional. Um pre, you know, PSAT. So that's also where that data may be a little skewed if we did report it. So just a caution when it's everybody.
Thank you, Teresa. Okay, moving to item seven on the agenda. Uh Megan, I'll give this back to you.
Talk about some graduation. Um I know there are some very specific board members who wanna mark some calendars. Um but and as you know, this is one of those where we know that this is setting a date. But we do have to make that official after April. So right now, what I'm proposing is that. We establish graduation date for June fifteen, two thousand nineteen, um but pending, pending winter.
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any further discussion? Want to officially enter the record? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstained, the most in passage unanimously, to establish graduation date. As June fifteenth, twenty nineteen, subject to Mother Nature. I don't think it is subject to Mother Nature. I thought the law was is that you graduate on that date. Irrespective of what happens with Mother Nature and the number of canceled school dates, although. The stu- the seniors are invited to come back and continue taking classes after graduation. For what purpose I can't imagine, but that that's my understanding of how it works.
We double check policies.
Okay. Alright. So moving on to uh uh the next item, uh to consider if appropriate, uh a trip to Osaka, Mexico. Mr. Oaxaca, excuse me. I'm thinking of the wrong, wrong country.
Sure. Yeah, that's one for the record.
Good evening. I'm passing around some selected pages from the volunteer handbook from Simply Smiles. Unfortunately, the copier didn't do it justice. So I also emailed you a PDF, the whole thing. So I'm here this evening to propose a trip to Oaxaca, Mexico with an organization called Simply Smiles. Some of you are very familiar with this pitch I'm about to give you. The trip would take place between June twenty-nine to July six, Saturday to Saturday. There's some local schools from Connecticut that have gone recently, including Choate Rosemary Hall, Sacred Heart University. The Silver Lake Group through the UCC. And also Beth Harvison's brothers and Beth Harvison herself are gonna be going this summer, later in July. In two thousand and eight, we had our first trip to Oaxaca, Mexico. And two thousand and fourteen, we had our last trip. Some of you remember in two thousand and fifteen, we tried to go. And mother nature and Zika had other, other plans, but they've taken care of that issue. So I'm very excited to hopefully have the opportunity to take students down again. From that first trip, two alumni, Samantha Steinmetz and Zach Gross. Speaking of graduation, they walked across the stage, they got their diploma. We went down to Mexico for that first trip. Zach is now the senior program manager with Simply Smiles. And Samantha Steinmetz, her little sister, Mylette, is at Chapag now. She's working for the organization and currently back in school. So they're still involved. So my curricular goal with this trip is really twofold. Primarily, it's a, it's the language practice. The kids are gonna get fifty plus hours of playing with the kids in the, in the children's home. Eating with them and helping them with their homework and things of that nature. And also, Kim, this is for you, the answering the call to citizenship. But in, in all seriousness, you know, there's a huge need down there. There, the level of poverty is sta, staggering, you know, especially compared to, to here. And I find that the students that have gone on this trip in the past, they get the, they get hit with culture shock when they go down there. And they really get hit with culture shock when they come back. They realize how lucky they are. And when a friend complains about something here, it all, it all of a sudden hits them as maybe that's a little trivial. So anyway, Oaxaca is the second poorest state in Mexico. Twenty-five percent of adults end up coming here to work. But also at the same time, it's a beautiful vibrant city. If you've seen the movie Coco and the Day of the Dead Celebration, that was largely, largely inspired by Oaxaca City. It was recently named the UNESCO World Heritage, Heritage Center. Aside from the Zika, one of the other problems that you would see on the, on the State Department website are teacher strikes. The teachers there, if our teachers knew what they had to endure. We have snow days, they have teacher strike days. They go months without getting paid. And what they do get paid is next to nothing. So that in the past has been an issue as far as safety. You know, there'd be strikes that would pop up with, with the increase in tourism. That has not been as much of an issue. So I shared some safety information with you there. You can see over three thousand volunteers have gone down, including Chapag students. Simply Smiles has never had an issue. In terms of cost, the, the Simply Smiles fee is set at seven fifty. The flight varies. We're looking at somewhere between fourteen hundred and two thousand. Some of you will remember that I've come here in the past to try to run a trip to Spain. Or last year, we tried to get a trip off the ground to Peru. Thanks again for approving those. The cost was prohibitive for too many families. So another plus of this trip, not only is it, in my opinion, the most impactful, but it also is very cost effective. So we can take up to twelve students. There is no lower limit. So pending your approval, I'm very confident that we can actually go. I included what a typical week would work, would look like. It'd be a combination of work product, work projects and then eating, playing and studying with the kids at the children's home. Thank you for your consideration. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to, to field them at this time. Yes.
What grades is this being offered to?
The, the students must turn fifteen by June twenty-nine to be eligible for the trip. We've got, I've shared this information, you know, with the, with the students with the understanding that is pending board approval. And we've had a fair amount of interest. So it would be open to the, to the higher grades first. They would have top priority and then it would funnel down to the lower grades. So, yes.
So, I don't know if I should assume or not, but are there other school systems from the United States or elsewhere participating in this, during this week or?
Oh, no, it would just be us.
Just you.
Yeah. Yes.
Mike, would you expect, I assume you expect to fundraise?
Correct.
Each student's responsible for their own expenses is?
Each student's responsible for their own expense. We do a combination. When we last went down, we used a, a website called First Giving, which is similar to GoFundMe, but for these type of trips. And so, you know, a student can create a profile on this website. And with the holidays coming up, it's perfect timing. You know, my name is so and so, I'd like to take this trip to simply, with Simply Smiles to Oaxaca, Mexico, to this children's home. They can put up pictures. They can set a goal of what they'd like to fundraise. And whatever money they made on First Giving shot right over to Simply Smiles. And just like GoFundMe, First Giving took a, a small cut. And so I had a couple of kids that offset seven fifty, the seven fifty Simply Smiles fee. Right off the bat, they had some nice aunts and uncles and grandparents that for their holiday present or birthday present. In, in lieu of a gift, a physical gift, they got money for their trip. We also do your traditional bake sales. We've done in the past, we did a pig roast, we've done wine tastings at the Hopkins for the adults in the community. And those have been successful.
Thank you.
Yes.
Correct. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
You might've said, I have a question. You might've said, how many students were you expecting to take?
The upper limit is twelve and there is no lower limit. So if I only had three or four kids that wanted to go, we'd be able to run the trip.
Okay, so the max is twelve.
Yeah.
Okay. And you said that you've had interest?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes.
I just move to approve at this point.
Second. Any further discussion? Actually, I have a question. Have you considered, I know this is outside the school year, which then starts to present challenges for other plans people have during the summer. Have you at all thought about possible trips during the school year?
I do more local trips, like my AP students, I'll take them to New York, usually in the November, December time period. We have gone, I think one time I did a trip during April break, but that's really the only time that would be feasible. And Simply Smiles didn't have an opening during that time.
Alright, any further questions? Michelle?
Not really a question. I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to provide this opportunity for students, cause it's a lot of work. And I've known quite a few people who've participated on this trip and it's very powerful. So thank you for providing this for them.
My pleasure, thank you.
Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstained, motion passes unanimously.
Good luck.
Alright. Alright, who's, are you presenting the next one?
I don't think much of a presentation. Alright, continuing to seek children to travel beyond our borders. I do have a request from Heidi Edo to take students to Quebec City. This trip would be February seventh through the tenth. She is looking to give students the opportunity to do some dog sledding adventures, see some museums. Connect with some host families. And there was some conversation on whether or not we were going to offer France again, but taking a look. And it was much as Mike had mentioned, sometimes that is cost prohibitive. Right now, it was looking like the cost was gonna be upwards of between thirty-five hundred and four thousand dollars. So we said, well, you know, we'd rather have more students experience some of that. And so her decision was to continue the, the annual tradition of Quebec. And so at this time, I am seeking approval for our students to travel to Quebec for February seventh through the tenth, four days.
Move to approve the trip to Quebec. I do have a question though. What, do you know what tour group they're using?
For the Quebec City?
Yeah.
We were looking at Primatar.
Yeah, they're quite good.
Actually, I have a question. Is it, is it open to all students?
Who, who is seeking this?
French, French students.
French students.
My, my question is still, my question, is it open to all students?
It is, it is specific to students taking French.
Okay. And there's no opportunity to open it up beyond the French class?
I have not explored that question. If it's something that we should be, but at this time it is because it is getting them to. It's getting our students to practice their French. That is also part of this experience is that we want them to apply their lessons.
Um, is it, what, what, same question I asked Mike. What's the age group or the, or the class range?
Who is he's approval?
Yeah, it was middle school.
Madame did not give me any age ranges, which.
I think she's. Yeah, but it's, it's pretty much at least all of nine twelve, maybe eight, depending on the interest of them.
Any further questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstained, and the motion passes unanimously. Alright, shell policy approval, second reading and policy three, two, eight, one, school fundraisers.
Yes, this is very timely. It's the second reading of school fundraisers. If you look at the policy, the original policy was just the first two paragraphs and we added crowdfunding. We took the crowdfunding language from a Cabe sample and added it to our existing school funding policy of three, two, eight, one. And we just wanted to give some guidelines around crowdfunding and, and who actually has control of that money. So a very tim, timely policy.
Move to accept for, oh, I'm sorry. No, 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 he recognized you, I was just blabbing. I'll, I'll second you as soon as you say it.
I'm sorry. I move to approve three, two, eight, one as policy of the board, second reading.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstained. Motion passes to adopt policy three, two, eight, one, school fundraisers. First reading, we'll move on to the next item, first reading, policy of fifty-one, forty-five, gender, identity and expression.
Yeah, so this is a new policy. So that's why it's not in yellow, cause the entire policy is new. It is required by law, so recently. So schools are now getting these policies and they're on the books. We, we spent a lot of time in our last committee meeting looking at two samples from Cabe. Cabe had actually based their policy, they had modeled it after a policy that had been in place in New York's state schools. So they sho, shared that with us as well. And we chose the, the Cabe version. So it's a lengthy policy. I, I hope people have had the time to, to read through it. Talking about students who are transgender. I, I think the only point that I, I would point out specifically, unless people have questions about. The pol, obviously ask the questions. But there, there's a phrase that shows up several times talking about the student consistently. The gender that they choose to, to use consistently. And that's, that has been, I guess, the, the challenge. You know, as students are, are transitioning and are figuring, sorting through their, that, that whole process. You know, at what, at, at what point, you can't, it, it's difficult for the school systems for a, a child or a student to go back and forth on their gender expression. So that, that, it does show up a couple of times to help guide the administration. And we did talk a lot in our policy committee about how, you know, each, the, the, there's flexibility in this policy. So that the administration can work with each student individually to, to meet their needs. But that, that the policy helps provide some framework and consistency so that there's something to, to look back to. But it, it is up to each building and the admin, building administrator to, to figure out how they will accommodate. So, so it's not really the policy's role to say, well, the bathroom has to be here or this has to be there. The administrator is going to work all of that out. It is just now stated in policy that we, we will, we need to accommodate and we will find a way to make this work. It is, you know, sort of an overview of a lot of very specific language.
Yeah, I'd like to move the adoption of proposed policy five, one, four, five, point five, three for first reading. I think this is a very important policy for us to establish here. Transgender youth are at a tremendously higher rate of suicide and all kinds of other adverse impacts. And we need to make sure that we've taken all the kinds of steps that we can to accommodate and to make sure that these people feel safe. And that this is a welcoming environment. And I think this policy is a good first step. I'm not a hundred percent sure whether the consistency of gender expression is gonna be a difficult thing for us to navigate. But I think we have to start somewhere. And I think we need to make sure that this is a, a welcoming, affirming and safe environment.
Thank you, agreed.
Can I, can I just ask one thing? So obviously, we're a small enough school that we can really be, take individual care over all this. And so it's not as if this kind of thing, we're gonna have to have all kinds of new procedure and mandates for our administration. One question I did have is the issue of, is the administration aware and prepared to deal with the technical bookkeeping issue, which is unfortunate? Which is the fact that the government makes you have one legal standard that you can't change. And then another one that you can, you are allowed to change based on the student's identity. So you kind of have to have, keep double books on each child. Is that, you're prepared to do that and that's not gonna be something that's gonna catch you by surprise along, along the way, once this suddenly becomes policy?
No, and we have worked with our counselors as well as, and it's timely, cause we were even talking about power school and, and how we collect data and such. And so it is one that it becomes very important, you know, how, how a student identifies becomes something that we're looking to make certain is, is accepted throughout. We also take a look at what are the, the legal ramifications and to make certain that we are keeping all of those records as they are. We also take a look at what are the, the legal ramifications and to make certain that we are keeping all of those records as they are.
Just to follow up on Alan's question for the superintendent. I assume that you've studied this policy. Michelle tells us it's required by law. Are you prepared to deal with it? There's a lot here and are you familiar with it? Are you recommending that? I understand it's required by law, but is it your recommendation that the board approve this?
It is my recommendation. It is one in which I can tell you, we've also sought legal counsel to make certain that this is where. You know, we are accepting, this is something in which our, our community as a school system. We want to know that we are not discriminating in any way, shape or form. But also recognizing that we have to create a safe environment for all students. And so for us, the policy will be very beneficial.
Alright, thank you.
Any further questions? All those in favor of, this is the first reading, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstained, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And let's see, switching over, sorry.
One, one, four, we have one more.
You got one more, Michelle? Or are we done? That was it, right? Thank you. First reading of Policy fifty-one, fourteen, Suspension and Expulsion.
Yeah, so as we were searching through our policies as we were working on gender expression. We found one policy that was missing the phrase sexual identity or expression. When talking about, well, this one was under harassment, but whether it's non-discrimination or, or harassment. So we, so we're trying to do a little housekeeping and keep all of our language up to date. So you'll see on the, was that the second or third page? Just scroll down. It's in yellow. We just added the phrase sexual identity or expression to the list of students there. Yeah, section G. I was gonna say, unfortunately, this one is about harassment, but. So that, and that, that's the only proposed change. I think we've included this language in all of the other policy, non-discrimination policies, so. That's it.
Great.
I move we adopt proposed Policy five, one, one, four for first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan, second. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, all those abstained, the motion passes on first reading of Policy five, one, one, four unanimously. Thank you. Alan?
I'd like to move we go into executive session to consider the ratification of the Shpog Valley Custodians and Cafeteria School Employees Agreement. Date of July first, two, one, eighteen to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Hopefully it'll be short.
Okay, the motion passes like to invite the superintendent to join us in executive session.